Uh, yeah, that's what I was.
Okay. I think I'm still thinking.
And then, yeah.
Who is it?
You gotta go to my.
My turn.
Bike's on.
It's my turn.
The, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, I do this.
Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' regular session. Today is July. Excuse me. Well, let's see if we can try this again.
Let's try this.
Today is five August and the time is approximately six P. M. I would request everybody to please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I would like to ask the elders of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Bolden to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Thank you for having us this evening. As elders of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, we're very honored and privileged to be at this meeting. We love the citizens in the county here and we love to share the gospel and love of Jesus Christ. So, let us pray. Our Father God, we thank thee for this beautiful evening that we have to be gathered here. We're so grateful for all the citizens here in Griffin, Georgia and for this county and this meeting that we have tonight. We pray Heavenly Father that we can all be filled with thy love. We pray that you will watch over our country and our city and our loved ones. We pray that we can fellowship with one another and have love for one another and our brethren, our brothers and sisters and all of your children, Father. We are so grateful for the knowledge that we have in our lives of our Savior who died on the cross for us. We pray that we can continue to be good citizens and to help one another and to remember what we stand for. And we pray that we can all be blessed tonight and we say all these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
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 If you would, please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion from the meeting earlier. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of property at seven eighteen, seven twenty-two and seven thirty-two West Broad Street, Griffin, Georgia for the amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand from Hanleider Methodist Church.
Is that a motion to amend the agenda for that?
I mean, a motion to approve.
Amend the agenda to approve this.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Where is it going to be added, Mister Chairman?
New business number one.
A zero.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion change. At this time, item number four. We'll have a presentation by Justin on Mul- of Mulden and Jenkins LLC to present the review of the June thirty, twenty twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. As y'all should have, for any of you, you should have three different documents, A D and A, so I'm just gonna kind of keep the auditors' discussion and analysis. So, you know, flip right into there. All right, for the, you know, the reason I'm here tonight, the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you with an overview of our independent audits report as well as your financial, you know, financial statement of highlights, including, you know, discussing the compliance reports. Jump right into it. The main issue I want, I mean, one thing I want to talk about and, you know, before we go into anything else is about the independent audit report we issued with the audit. You should be able to see that on page four of your A D and A. As far as this, we'd like to make sure we note that the management's responsibility is of the financial statements, is for the financial statements. As for the auditors, our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit, which is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards and GAAP. Based on this, I'm happy to say that, you know, we were able to issue a unmodified audit report, which is also known as a clean opinion. This is the highest level of assurance we can give as external auditors on, based on the audit. This means the financial statements are considered to be presented fairly. So, that's, I mean, that's about as good as you can get. That's what you want going forward. I'm gonna hit on a few more highlights with the financial statements, mainly keeping it to the general fund, considering that's where the majority of your activity is, your revenues, your expenditures. So, we'll just jump right in there. You should see about, on page seven through nine, there's about five different charts. Mainly, I'm, the first two are about the general fund revenues and expenditures. The revenues, the sum of those are sixty-three million dollars with the general fund expenditures totaling sixty-six million dollars. As you can see, the vast majority of your revenues are from property taxes, which is not uncommon for a county of your size, very normal. That's, you know, the second one right behind that is another set of taxes, the sales taxes. Both those combined, it could win about seventy percent of the general fund's revenues. So, when you look over there to the next graph, nearly forty-seven percent of your entire expenditures are based on the, on the public safety, which includes the jail, you know, the patrol and sheriffs and things of that nature. Very common for a county of your size. The next three charts you can see, go from eight, I mean, through page eight through nine, those are basically just showing, you know, the very, you know, they're all showing very positive signs, showing continued growth over the last five to six years. This is what you want to see. Everything is, you know, moving in the right direction. This is a good thing. Looking down, you can, you can basically see your fund balance on the very last, very last chart on page nine, which shows about, I think your general fund, fund balance is nearly twenty million dollars, of which you have four months of expenditures and fund balance, which is, which is common for a county, you know, that's six thirty you're in. That's a good thing. That's pretty much the recommendation so that, I think you're all in a good spot in that, in that area. Moving on, as is discussed earlier, I was going to hit briefly on the compliance reports, which there's two different ones. There's your yellow book report and your single audit report. Your yellow book report, I'll discuss some of our findings that we, in a few minutes, but before that, I'm gonna jump into the single audit report, which on that's based on your federal expenditures you had during the year. Nearly fifteen million dollars were handled at the county. It resulted in two major programs that required a single audit. This is, you know, based on that, based on the accordance with our standards, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the county's compliance based on their single audit. Moving on to the next piece, there's a few pages about further, on page fifteen and sixteen. During our audit, we noted a few areas with accounting and internal patrol systems that we believe can be improved. We have reported two findings. Both of them are material weaknesses and we also found one manager point. It's not as significant as a finding, but it still warrants to be discussed. As you can see, there's two different ones. And both of them are related to the tax commissioner's office. One is about the general accounting matters, closeout procedures, and the other one is about the segregation of duties. About the general accounting matters, this is, you know, this is essentially what we noticed at the tax commissioner's office. We were unable to provide, you know, we were unable to be provided with the necessary documentation we needed to be able to perform the audit by the deadline. Then there were some issues that were experienced at that office based on this, you know, I think they had a software conversion during the years, among other things, some turnover. But regardless, you know, this resulted in some significant delays, additional time, effort on, you know, all parties involved. You know, this, you know, based on all this information, we ended up having to have significant adjustments among many, among several different trial ballots we received, which we audit. During this process, we noted there was other issues that show that the bank reconciliations weren't being prepared and reviewed properly and, you know, in a timely manner, and they weren't being able to properly maintain the general ledgers in a, you know, timely manner. But at this point, at the end of, you know, once we received everything we needed by, I think the date was June twentieth of twenty twenty-four, we were able to get, you know, started, you know, we were able to complete the audit in regard to that section in a, within a month. Nothing I, you know, as you can see there, there's some recommendations we, you know, noted, I believe at this point. Now, I mean, I believe at this point she is, you know, the tax commissioner's office has, has taken the, you know, correct, the corrective actions and they're, you know, they're addressing these issues. Hopefully this will not be a problem going forward. As for the segregation of duties, the second finding, this was basically that, you know, the finding which showed that they did not have adequate segregation of duties among the receiving, depositing and recording of revenues. It was noted that, you know, one individ- or you know that numerous individuals had the ability to open the mail, you know, as well as collect receipts on accounts receivable, post cash receipts and authorize adjustments, all in the property tax software. Now, you know, failure to have proper segregation of duties, this can result in, you know, misappropriation of assets, misappropriation of assets, which could not be, you know, detected during the normal course of business. Now, I'm still, I believe this one as well has been remedied at this point. I do not think it's gonna, do not think it's an issue hopefully going forward and, you know, that should not be a problem. I did notice one other item that was a management point, a recommendation, not a finding, but it was noted that, you know, there were some excess funds at the tax commissioner's office. You know, basically at the tax commissioner, which is a custodial fund, and they're using that their resources are held by the county in a purely custodial capacity, which means that basically all the funds held there are owed to another government organization or individual. But as we, during the audit, it was determined that nearly a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of excess funds was, was determined to be there, for which the county was unable to, you know, determine who the monies were owed to. So, that was the issue. I believe they're in the process of remedying that, I mean, fixing that error. They're just, I mean, this could solely be related to, I guess it was like excess sales, property tax sales and interest. But in the meantime, they're gonna figure out what to, how to, you know, fix that problem as well. In addition, moving on, there were some other issues that, there's some other things we wanted, you know, we'd like to bring up during the A D and A. There's some new standards that might, you know, be of interest to y'all going forward, but something y'all, you know, something to think about. But, you know, they shouldn't have any effect on the county as of this year coming up. But, you know, we always like to make sure to bring it up. There's some other items in the back here that, you know, that might be of interest to the county, such as free quarterly education, continuing education, things of that nature. But as of, you know, for asking any of that, I mean, if y'all don't have any questions, I'd like to thank, you know, the finance department, Erica, and all of her people, what they've done, you know, they did, it was a lot of work involved in getting this audit wrapped up and out the door. I know it was a little late this year, but, you know, I think once we got everything we needed, we were able to get the audit issued in a timely manner. Any questions?
We need to accept, motion to accept.
You don't have to, this is a presentation.
Okay, okay. Comments or questions for Mr. Elliott?
We appreciate the presentation earlier today with, with the explanation and more, in more detail. So, we appreciate that.
Yeah, there was, yeah, we, yeah, definitely we discussed that a little further, but I just want to make sure we hit the highlights again and.
Yes, thank you. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Elliott and Ms. Thye for what you did this time. This was above and beyond. This was almost everyday action when usually it doesn't require anything like that. So, we truly appreciate both of your work to be able to get this done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks.
Item number two, presentation of life-saving award. Chief Burke.
Good evening. So, we have a, a very exciting evening this evening. In the fire service, we oftentimes are faced with just bad things every single day. So, it's very good to finally, one run where things go right. And we study what's called cascading events on a regular basis where one small event turns into much larger events, but unfortunately, a lot of times, we look at it from a negative stance where one small error turns into a larger error. Well, tonight, we're celebrating the total opposite. This was a cascading event to where some bystanders started it off right. They had an AED locally, they were able to provide care, our engine crew arrived, they initiated care, EMS took over and we had a good outcome, a very good outcome. So, I'm gonna read the certificate, I'm gonna call them up. So, on April tenth, twenty twenty-four, firefighter Curtis Brigham and Lieutenant So on April tenth, 2024, firefighter Curtis Brigham and Lieutenant Ann Hinton responded to a patient who was apneic, which means not breathing, and pulseless. Upon arrival, they found locals administering care, and again, she was without pulse and not breathing. After everybody got involved and did care, the patient not only was discharged in viable state, she's actually here with us tonight. So Ms. Pippin, if you would come up, please? And if Lieutenant Hinton and Curtis Brigham would come up, please, I have the honor of presenting them a life-saving award. Actually, I'm gonna present the certificates, we're gonna let Ms. Pippin give them their So we'll start off Curtis Brigham. And Lieutenant Ann Hinton.
Hi, hey.
You've got to say it.
Let me finish that first.
Yeah.
Let me finish.
You can poke him if you want to. He's already injured. He's bloated enough for one day.
You can get on your side first, one on your side first. Yeah, there you go. All right, are we first in?
No.
Close enough.
Okay.
All right, watch me first. We have several people to take pictures too. One, three, one, two, three. One more time.
All right. All right, Tammy, Kate, for the view, anybody who wants to be, come on forward. Come on. This happens once, so let's get it right. Tall guys get better. One more picture. Three. All right, one, two, three. Awesome, thank you.
That's definitely a good news story.
It is.
Mr. Chairman, while they're getting adjusted, I would just like to make a comment that it's always, it has always been very important to me that our firefighters...
Hold on, guys.
Give him that mic, give him that mic.
Because you want him to hear it.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I think that it's always been important to me that our firefighters are not just firefighters, that we incentivize them immediately to become not just EMR drivers of ambulances, but EMTs and EMT specialists, because they show up at, at the scene, and they have to provide the first response care. And if we don't give them the tools to do that, because seconds is brain, seconds is heart, and the quicker that they're able to respond appropriately, give medications necessary, have an AED there, I don't know if they had an AED at the place where it started. But this is why they're so much more than just firefighters. They're, and we need to give them the skills that they need to be able to move forward so that not only are they able to provide that immediate fire care, but that personal health care that people need in that situation. I just want to say thank you to Chief Byrd and to Chief Polk for pushing their firefighters to get these extra certifications, because it means life.
Means life, you're exactly right. All right, any other comments? Thank you. Item number five, citizen comment. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizens' comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend the rule. Dr. Ledbetter, do we have people to speak tonight?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have two people signed up, Mr. Sadru Ali. Mr. Ali, if you would state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, sir. My name is Sadru Ali. I'm at 4319 Nuneal Road in Griffin, Georgia, and I'm here today, I was in the last meeting also, to speak about the alcohol ordinance. The reason I'm against is alcohol is a social bad habit. And ordinance was, state ordinance was passed in 2018, I think, somewhere there. And now we are, we want to apply for the county in 2024. Why now? What will happen is if we pass this ordinance, every residential zone will have a commercial alcohol business. And now, before the prayer, we started the meeting, it has a lot of meaning, that we have to care for our people, for our children, and for our citizens. For example, I give you that, right across 4319, there's a new construction going on. They put a alcoholized sign before the license, before the permits, before the, they didn't even get the, what do you call it, the occupational certificate yet, but they put the sign. And the code enforcement put, tell them to take it out, they covered it. So what does it mean? They are breaking the law before we pass the law. So my request to the staff here now is that, please, try to save the children, youngsters' life by not passing this law, by not reducing the distance between the churches, school, and libraries. Definitely not one alcohol store right across the other one, because we don't have that much population also, and we don't demand that much. I hardly do, I hardly survive there. I don't care if they put another one, but see the side effect, what's going to happen. That's all, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ali.
And also, last night, yesterday, I emailed you to Mr. Davis also, what's my concern is, and I also emailed the picture of the sign, also. Thank you so much for giving me the time. God bless you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kim Slaughter, 165 Slaughter Road, Spalding County. Got my glasses on. The Board of Commissioners will be voting on the approval of an advanced voting location, of the possible advanced voting location for Spalding County this evening. Thank you in advance for the open discussion, which took place at the last regular Spalding County Commissioners meeting, I truly appreciate that. On behalf of the Spalding Board of Elections and Voter Registration, our staff, all poll workers, and most importantly, the voters of Spalding County, I ask that you seriously consider this approval so that we may move forward and better serve the voters of Spalding County with elections which are secure, accurate, and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter.
Mr. Chair, that's all that have signed up this evening.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners zoning public hearing on June twenty-sixth, 2024, work session and regular meeting on July first, 2024, and special call meeting and extraordinary session on July fifteenth, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion pass. Item number seven, new business. Could you read that again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I made the motion to approve the purchase of property at 718, 722, and 732 West Broad Street, Griffin, Georgia, for the amount of $292,000 from Hanleider Methodist Church.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number two, consider request for out-of-state use of Spalding County motor coach. Director Carmichael?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Macon Trax Travel Club, a program from Senior, Spalding County Senior Center, have requested use of the motor coach on October twenty-one to twenty-two for a two-day trip to the Great Smoky Mountains in North Carolina. It is the policy of this vehicle that any out-of-state travel is based on the approval of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number three, consider reappointment of Matthew Perry for the Region Four Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council for a three-year term ending June thirty, 2027. Dr. Ledbetter?
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Last time we had this conversation, we had indicated that this appointment was for a two-year term, not three years. After we sent the information to, to the regional office, they indicated that this was a three-year term, not a two-year. So we are bringing this back just for reappointment, for a full three-year term of Mr. Perry to this position.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Yes.
When was this term approved last?
Two weeks ago.
So then my question is, why are we not doing this when we're doing our regular annual appointments?
We, we have two appointments that are mid-year appointments. It's this one for the Regional for Emergency Medical Services, and then there is a second one for the Spalding County Department of Family and Children's Services Board. Both of these appointments are mid-year appointments. They do not fall in line for January.
So I, that's what I don't understand, because we appoint everybody for a DFACS board in January. So how did we get off-cycle that we're doing appointments in June?
I'm not sure how we got off-cycle, Ms. Quinn, but I will go back, or, I, I will go back and find that out, because I had the same question.
Because we need to fix this.
We do.
So that we're not doing this mid-year. So, I mean...
This would be mid-year in three years.
So, I, so I guess my, my question is, how can we make this appointment so that it coincides with our December appointment day?
Can we make this one for six months or whatever, so that it...
I mean, Stephanie, where, where are we legally?
It, it really depends on what the Department of Family and Children's Services Board, I'm sorry, this was the, the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. The next one is DFACS. It, it depends on what their requirements are. So it, if they have mid-year appointments, then the fact that ours is, that we typically appoint at the first of the year wouldn't necessarily make a difference.
So, so, but we don't know that that's, is what it has happened. We don't know if someone left and they got reappointed, because it's just, you got these two offs that totally are out of sync with what we're doing at the end of the year. And I just think, not saying not to appoint them, but I think we need to get things back in order so that they're hitting the appointments list at the same time that everyone else is being given.
Yeah, so we just need to figure out why these are at a different time than, than the others.
So just out of curiosity, we don't know if we know it or not. So are, are they having enough people show up on these boards? Is that why this is also an emergency, maybe, appointment? I mean, well, this, obviously, this is a reason why we're doing this now, so that person can start showing up now. Are we, are, is, are they vacant now?
Well, this is a regional appointment, so it, it is not just for a countywide. This is for regional, for Region Four, for the emergency medical side. Their bylaws did indicate, because Reagan reached across and asked them for a copy of the bylaws, their bylaws do indicate a mid-year appointment for this one. DFACS may be a different story, but I will follow back up with DFACS on that one, but they have asked for the appointment for, for the next agenda item.
How often do they meet, by the way?
Who, DFACS, quarterly?
Is it quarterly?
Quarterly. Especially since they haven't had an office here. But Matthew Perry, do we have someone from our fire service or our police services that are also on this regional board?
Yes, Chief Polk is.
Okay, so, yeah, that's, that's the confusion. Why are we doing two different things? Because I thought, I mean, as a regional board, we should be hitting...
We should be hitting on the same timeline as the others. I agree with that. I will continue to push back, but they have asked specifically if we would move ahead with the mid-year appointments.
So would your recommendation be to just approve, make these two appointments and then try to go back and figure out, because clearly, we're, if we're making an appointment to June of 1929...
We've got time to make that change.
Yeah, okay.
Have we made the motion?
No, we started talking. So I would like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Matthew Perry to the Region Four Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council for a term of three years ending June 2027.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Number four, consider reappointment of Stephen Norris for the Spalding County Department of Family and Children's Services Board for a five-year term ending June thirty, 2029. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I assume we have the same concerns about the...
Yeah. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Consider appointment of Chairman Davis for the 2024 ACCG Voting Delegate. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Mr. Chairman, what number year is this, that you're serving as a voting delegate?
I think this is my...
Second or third.
Second or third. All right. All those in favor, please, did you have a question? I'm sorry. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries.
We just feel like we're throwing you under the bus, or making you do all these extra meetings. We appreciate you putting your time forward to do it all.
Thank you. Consider approval of opioid litigation.
So we had, we had initially talked about the tier-two defendants, the smaller defendants in the opioid litigation, and the, the possibility of not pursuing any claims against those. Our attorneys in the opioid litigation have said that we can... Our attorneys in the opioid litigation have said that we can pick and choose, basically, the, the ones that we do pursue, and they recommend pursuing all, all of the Tier Two defendants that they have, that are named so far.
Yeah.
And so this would just be your approval to, to, to continue with the litigation against Tier Two defendants until our attorneys advise us otherwise.
Who's the Tier One defendants? Because I thought that we had this discussion and decided that it was not going to be worth pursuing Tier Two.
So Tier One defendants are Allergan and Walmart and the, the really large-
The actual drug company, Merck, Pfizer? No?
No, no. Mostly distribution.
These are people who give the drugs out.
And the, the Tier Two are just smaller-
But not physicians?
Not physicians, no ma'am.
What tier are they in?
They're not in a tier.
See? That's, that's what's wrong, because they're the ones prescribing. But yeah, I, so I thought we had decided that we would not, that's why I was thinking that we had said.
We, we had, and, and that was based on advice from our attorneys, but they have since come back and suggested that we continue, based on some, some new information that they, they found out about some of the defendants. And so it is their advice that we continue because they do believe that there will be more settlement funds that will come to the county as a result of that.
So as a result of this, we need to go back and vote to now pursue second tier?
To pursue, yes ma'am.
I would like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to, to change our vote to pursue second-tier litigants in opioid litigation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number seven, consider approval for early voting location. Dr. Ledbetter?
Mr. Chair, the staff would make a recommendation to move forward with early voting location at the Cooperative Extension location in a temporary format for, for us to be ready for early voting October 1. This would require us to file the paperwork or for the, the voter registration and elections office to file paperwork with the Secretary of State's office for that address change in, in support of that effort. It would also be staff's recommendation that after voting is complete and tabulations have been certified, that we move forward with the restructuring and redesign of that location for a more permanent location.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
The other veteran up here should second that.
Well, this is, this is for the early voting.
Oh, this is early voting? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. I'll, any more discussion?
In my understanding, because County Manager, you did speak with the Board of Elections Office about this. There was an agreement with you all.
I shared, I shared with them today that, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Did you have a comment?
I did, and I'm gonna be illegal. So do we talk about money? Do we allocate money?
You did, yes ma'am. You allocated money last, last time.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
For the first part.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, for this part. Item number eight, consider approval of the Annual Area Agency on Aging Contract from Three Rivers. We do this every year. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item number nine, consider approval of the CSBG Amendment Number Two, adding $2,400 to the grant revenue.
This is, this is an amendment to our annual grant with CSBG. The amendment is for the county to receive an additional $2,400 for the program.
We like having more money.
For senior center program or for what Three Rivers program, nutrition?
CSBG, yes ma'am. It's, it's the nutrition program.
Nutrition?
Kelly shaking her head.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the approval of the amendment of $2,400 to the grant revenue for the CSBG for senior nutrition.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number 10, consider approval of the first reading of the alcohol ordinance. Ms. Wyndham, any comments?
No, nothing further.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
This is a first reading. All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We, all the distances are based on the state law distances.
That's correct.
There are noticeable distance differences in hours versus the state law that they would have to comply with anyway.
The only, the only one that we include that is not in state law is the public library.
So, so my concern is the text in the email that Mr. Ali did send us all, which clearly shows that either you're advertising that you're selling alcohol, that you're either not permitted or not, I just, then plus the whole building was dark. So I do have some, some concerns with his complaint. I don't know that it has anything to do with our stuff that we're doing, and it's more about code enforcement.
Correct.
So I would hope that we would have some conversation with him because if you already breaking the law before you even get a chance to do stuff, what is our expectation that you're going to, it gives me a country, country, what'd you call it, place?
Yeah.
It gives me those kind of vibes, that you're already starting out. So hopefully, Mr. Ali, you'll have a chance to have a conversation with Steve about that, and we can get those things addressed.
And that's clear, and that's clearly code enforcement.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number 11, consider appointment of two civil engineering firms. I believe we want to make that three.
Sure.
So do I have a motion to appoint the three civil engineering firms?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to say who those firms are?
Um, it is, I would like to make a motion to approve the firm, firms of Troy, Whitley, and Paragon Consulting as the three engineering organizations that we will have in our lineup for engineering services for 2425.
Was it Whitley?
Whitley.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you. CIE update and resolution for FY '25. Dr. Ledbetter?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the information that we provided over the last few weeks for our CIE update is ready for transmission to the Department of Community Affairs. Just want to give a huge thank you to the staff for all the work that they have helped put this together, and also to Commissioner Flowers-Taylor for meeting with staff on multiple occasions to work through the details for the next five-year community work plan. I believe we're ready to move forward with the resolution.
Motion to approve the CIE update and resolution for FY '25.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do I need to also move to transmit, or is that a different thing?
That, that's a, that's a part of the resolution.
Okay.
So once you agree the resolution, that affords staff the opportunity to move forward with transmission.
To transmit, okay. Sorry.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number 13, consider adoption of the human, consider the adoption of the human resource personnel policy. Do I have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number eight, report of the County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the last few years, we've scheduled, or sorry, we have searched for a deputy county manager. In fact, I believe our Board of Commissioners have really pushed on this search. And I'm happy to report this evening that Ms. Erica Dye was promoted last week to fill the role of Deputy County Manager for Administration. Initially in her role, she will oversee administration, finance, HR, IT, and communications, and over the next few months, the plan is to expand her responsibilities. I'm also happy to report the following hires. Citizen Engagement Specialist, it is my privilege to introduce Dr. Cheryl Burks. Dr. Burks is here this evening. She's been with us for two weeks now, and it is a privilege to have her here in, in the role of Citizen Engagement Specialist. The Community Development Director, we have made a, an offer for Community Development Director, and he will start August the 19th. Our Senior Planner for Community Development, we now have several applications, and will begin the interview process as our new Community Development Director takes on his role. I'm also happy to report that our Grants Manager will start with us this month. He comes with 25 years of experience in grant management, so I'm really excited about the opportunity to bring him on board.
Who will he work for?
He will work directly for Ms. Dye. A new higher fire training class is scheduled to graduate November the 22nd, so that will bring us up to about 98% for our fire department, so very happy over that. I also want to say thank you again to the Board of Commissioners for the work performed over the last eight months with Evergreen Solutions, the consulting firm who completed the study that you reviewed to alleviate our pay compression. Since your approval on the pay plan, our HR department is receiving more qualified applicants daily, and it is absolutely a direct result from, from the work that the Board of Commissioners have done. As a legislative update, Dante Handel will, with Association, sorry, ACCG, he's the Associate Director of Governmental Affairs, will be with us to provide an update on House Bill 581, property and sales tax reform, on August the 29th at 6:00 PM in this room. I mean, I would encourage all of us to be in attendance for that update. ACCG Policy Meeting, Chairman Davis and I will be attending the ACCG Government Affairs Team in Bartow County over the next few days to discuss several important issues ranging from property tax reform, mental health, public works bidding threshold, truck weights, GDOT's infrastructure bank, L-MIG funding, solar facilities and local government regulations, along with electric vehicle infrastructure and elections. This is the first of two sessions that ACCG will conduct in August. The second session is scheduled for August 21st and 22nd in Dougherty County, and if you're available, it would be great if you could attend because these are policy meetings that ACCG will take back to the legislators during the next session for discussion.
What date did you say Dante was coming here?
On August the 29th.
And he's coming here to do what?
To provide us with an update on House Bill 581, the property and sales tax reform bill.
This, this is a-
Sorry, it's legislation now. It's not a bill.
This is a big deal. This is a big deal that will affect all our property owners.
Is this, this on the same night that we're having a zoning meeting?
It is.
Hmm, I thought our zoning meeting was like the fourth Thursday.
Thursday.
Because it's the 22nd.
Your zoning meeting is the week before.
Yes.
Please forgive me. She's right.
Okay, so we're having an extra meeting.
This is an extra meeting specific, please forgive me, this is an extra meeting specifically for House Bill 581, for updating our-
Public hearing, for everybody to be able-
Everybody to hear.
Every homeowner should surely come-
That is the only exception, because I'm totally against having an extra meeting.
Me too.
I don't care who it is. Okay, I'm sorry, go back.
No worries. All right, so our forensic audit, the firm conducting our forensic audit continues to progress their work with the full cooperation of county staff. We anticipate the audit will be complete at the end of October. Mr. Chair, that is all my update.
Commissioner Johnson?
Okay, briefly. During the last meeting, we had Charles Abbott, I guess, that, that came and actually spoke to us, we were going to schedule a work session. Now that we have the new Community Development Executive here, are we waiting for all that to come together?
That is correct, yes ma'am.
Okay.
We will wait until the new director comes into office before we have that discussion.
Okay, because we know we're getting a lot of calls on that, so we need to go ahead and put that in the forefront sooner than later.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations to our new hires. Glad that you're aboard and your promotion. Thank you very much. And I know that Dr. Burks is up and running right now with Citizen Engagement. She's been out doing our ribbon cuttings for us. We appreciate you for that, and welcome aboard. Another wonderful work session today. I just, I'm tickled with staff. Thank you so much for actually preparing these work sessions. It allows our meetings to go more fluid, and, you know, we're getting a lot out of this, too. So I'm glad that the public actually do it, that they actually comes and attends our work sessions. That's, that's very good. And last but not least, you know, I just can't, you know, thank the gentleman, you know, and just the award presentation for the life savings, the life-saving award today that we, that actually was received today. Remarkable, is all I can say. I just can't thank the fire department enough for it, and it needs to be publicized a lot more than we do, and the services that we provide, and we wouldn't be able to do it without the great team that we have. So thank you very much.
I just want to say how awesome of a community we live in. It really is a great place to live, and, and, and no one is going to close the household garbage collection facilities. That's all.
Thank you.
Enough said. They're only going to have to pay for it.
No one is closing-
I would like to say, first of all, like I said, I want to thank the fire department for, for the work that they do. We do a lot of work that we don't get credit for. We do a lot of work that we don't get paid for. It's because I hate WellStar, but that's another whole story altogether. But we don't get the credit for the amount of work that we put in the community because we are the ones showing up on scene first. Erica, since you're officially in your task, I will take my first opportunity to take a shot at you. I want to make sure that all the people that are working and administrative look like the people that live in Spalding County.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm gonna leave it with that, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, no, I'm paying attention.
Yes, ma'am.
The guy from Alden and Jenkins talked real, and he went over it, talked about their concerns about our training program, the amount of effort we're putting into training our staff, and the amount of money we're putting on education. We doing a lot of stuff, but we're not spending that money to reinvest in our community. So I want to know what that, Steve, going forward, I want to know what that looks like. What, what do we take that consideration, what do we take in consideration as to what he was saying? He kind of glossed over it, but it was, it was a finding, that we're kind of low on what we're actually putting into our training and education programs for our employees. Another thing about the fire department, our fire department is tremendous. They have this network, and as a result of this network, they have been doing a program called Praise and Preparedness. Now, you know, people say, why do we need to be prepared at church? Duh, people be getting messed up in church. But as a result of that, they have come and helped us to have someone to come into our, our church community, we have a lot of old people, to teach them what CPR looks like, to teach them what the AED looks like, to teach them not to be afraid to tell somebody else that they need to press on somebody's chest harder. That's the stuff that they're doing besides putting out fires and besides running up behind before WellStar gets there to, to, to perform American life-saving procedures on them. So they're extraordinary, and the value that they are to this community is, we can't, it's so understated, because if it empowers a small church, which y'all know we got a lot of churches, to make their people feel empowered enough to help take care of each other if there's an emergency, that's a lot. That's saying a lot. So I can't say enough about the tremendous amount of work that they do in the community and the tremendous reputation they have for always putting their best foot forward and for making us proud. My other question was, will the Citizen Engagement person work for Erica?
No. No, ma'am.
Work directly for me.
So hopefully, we will be able to get that chain of command somewhere in writing so that we can know-
Yes, ma'am.
-what, what it looks like. Other than that, I, I, I say to Steve, you've, you've done a really good job this past eight months. It has been really hard. I'm trying not to be negative, but I don't have a lot of high hopes for our audit for '24 going much smoother than this has. Maybe you guys can make some little sparkles come down, but yeah, I just want us to be beyond this whole period of not knowing what our finances look like, because in that way, we can better serve the taxpayers. We still have a decision to make at September, whenever. we can better serve the taxpayers. We still have a decision to make at September, whenever, about the military. So those things are very, very important. And if we're really interested in trying to make things easier and better for everyone, we need to make sure that we have all of that information succinctly. That's all I have.
Vice Chairman?
I'd like to congratulate Ms. Erica, too. Very well deserved. Please, whoever's following in your footsteps, bet them. I mean, if they aren't as good as you've been, we'll be good shape. You've done an awesome job. I understand the finances a lot better since you took over. I look forward every month to our little, your little slideshow and everything showing us where we stand. I mean, and everybody out here enjoys it, too. Well, they don't enjoy it. They understand it a bit better.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve, I just got a couple of little things. I sent an email out last week about Lakeside Drive and Highway 92. I just would like to get an update on that whenever I can. And also, I sent an email about Yarborough Mill, about the chip and seal.
TJ is working that feverishly right now, so we'll give you more here in the next few days.
All right, I'm good.
Okay. August 29th is really important. When we bring in the, our lobbyist, there's a number of things that people are talking about, freezing home taxes, home property taxes, and all of that. It, some people are seeing earlier versions of the House Bill that went in when it was just 3%. Those numbers, that language has changed. Everybody needs to pay attention when that comes in on what it means to be done. So I would suggest everybody try to make that if they possibly can.
Will we do anything, Mr. Chairman, to advertise that in the newspaper, on the, on our, on our media sites? Because there's really not any way for people to know unless we
Yes.
put a sign up. Come and see if your stuff is going to...
You know that wonderful doctor we have in Citizen Engagement?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Put it to work.
But yeah, I think, you know, if we want that response, it needs to be everywhere. The senior center, Walmart,
In the paper.
wherever, so that people can know that this is where they'll get that information.
Yeah. Congratulations, Erica. Well deserved. Thank you. Ms. Quinn, Ms. Rita, you've got a thing coming up on the 9th?
Ashley, on the 9th, and we did send invitations out to everyone, but it's open to the public. It's an opportunity to talk with someone who is an authority on how to talk about addiction in our community. We do a lot of things to help people. We give school supplies. We give free meals. We help people with their rent. But the source of all of these symptoms is the disease. And we don't talk about it in a way that is prolific or that is understandable. So there will be a talk this Friday, the 9th of August, at St. John Lutheran Church.
9:30.
9:30 till 11:30. And also, there will be some discussion just to help the community become aware of the monies that are available through the opioid litigation, and if there are opportunities for recovery-type groups to get more information, and that will happen at that time, too. But the public isn't invited. If you do feel like you would like to come, feel free to email me or Rita, and we will send you the survey out. So yes, it's an opportunity for us to start working on the addiction problem at the root, rather than trying to fix the Band-Aid issues that happen after the disease.
And it starts with the communication piece. That's, the communication is what we're going to focus on.
Not being afraid to talk about it. Big issue.
And it's what you say and how you say it.
Yes. Congratulations to the staff, specifically on the fire site, for Beat the Heat Fire, both city and county. The Deputy Sheriff's Department was out there, snow cones, all that stuff, lots of kids going and doing stuff and enjoying water. It was a really great thing. Last, I'd like to ask the county manager to look into what it would take for us to contract and agree to do zoning codes. It's time to upstake that. We've got to figure out how to do that. And I think if you'll make contact with the zoning attorney and talk with him, we can do that. This is a high priority for the staff and has been a high priority for a while, and we're going to have to go outside the county, or outside the staff to be able to get this done. All right, any last-minute comments from anybody on the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We're adjourned. Thank you all for coming out and listening.